Pretty funny. Good evening, it is six o'clock and I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on April 14th to order. Unless there's an objection, seeing none, the meeting is called to order. Councilwoman Lotenbacher, will you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Good evening. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, with justice for all.
Is Deputy Chief, right, you're, we're next, okay, thank you.
May Council, good evening. It's my pleasure to present another one of our great onboarding police officers to you this evening and to be sworn in by the mayor. We have Officer Luis Flores come on up. He comes to us from Columbus after three years and is joined by his family here in the front row, so if you're ready, there you are.
I'm ready.
You would please, is this on Jennifer? Okay. If you would please raise your right hand and then just repeat after me. On my honor, I-
On my honor, I, Luis Flores.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that-
Solemnly swear and affirm that-
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America-
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia-
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money-
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for money.
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof-
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States-
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States.
Any other state-
Any other state.
Or any foreign state which I am.
Or any foreign state which I am.
By the laws of the State of Georgia-
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer-
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer.
According to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules-
I will faithfully follow the legal rules.
Regulations, policies, and procedures-
Regulations, policies, and procedures.
Of the Dunwoody Police Department-
Of the Dunwoody Police Department.
And the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Officer Flores, I cannot thank you enough for choosing Dunwoody. We are thrilled that you have chosen to make this your professional home and we know that our community will embrace you. There's not a better city in the state or the country to work for and we are so grateful that you're part of our team now. You let any of us up here know if there's anything we can do for you and your beautiful family and also to your colleagues in the back. As always, there are simply no words to thank you for the work you do for our community. We are so grateful and we are, again, so grateful that you have chosen Dunwoody and welcome. Okay. Public comment, you'll, Susan Mitchell. You'll have three minutes, are y'all ready? Okay, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Susan Mitchell. I live in Dunwoody Station and let me begin my very brief remarks by telling you, I was coming home back across Ashford, Dunwoody, crossing 285, one beautiful evening last week. I was stopped at the stoplight and took in the skyline of Dunwoody from that perspective. And let me just say, anybody driving into Dunwoody should thank us profusely for that view. It is so beautiful. In fact, I don't know why you would come in, why you wouldn't just stay unless you just wanted to drive back and forth and see our skyline. It is that beautiful. But beyond our skylines, let's talk about housing. I trust you were satisfied with the comp plan draft as presented by TSW on April 1st. I noticed the draft designated multifamily development in the Ashford Center character area as appropriate with considerations or yellow. Is it appropriate? As the draft reads, parcels in that area could become apartment complexes adjacent to owner-occupied housing. This is an area that should be classified low density. It is not near transit, it is not near highways, it is near neighborhoods and owner-occupied housing. Low density is the characteristic in this area. I have requested TSW edit the document to designate multifamily as inappropriate or red in this area. If asked by the consultants, I would ask that you support this request for revision. North of perimeter center west, development intensity should diminish as a buffer between the vibrancy of our edge city, our beautiful edge city, and the tranquility of the Dunwoody neighborhood communities we call home. There are plenty of apartments in the perimeter core area, there are more coming, that is where density is appropriate. Let's engage with developers who will bring low-density housing formats such as cottage courts, house-scale complexes, and townhomes to the area north of perimeter center west, giving our city a variety of owner-occupied housing types and creating an elegant transition from the vibrant edge city to the legacy neighborhood character areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Ali. You changed sides tonight. I couldn't see you over there either.
I try to stay sporadic.
Right.
Nice haircut, by the way, but don't count that against my three minutes, that's a free comment. Oh, it's starting. All right, City Council, thank you so much for having me tonight. A couple of things, first and foremost, for those of you celebrating, Happy Passover, I'm gonna try, I got to seek, maybe I, maybe I got it right. Anyways, Happy Passover for those of you celebrating. Just want to talk to you about a couple of, just kind of a random comments. Number one, I have noticed it looks like we've completed a lot of the Dunwoody signs around the city of Dunwoody. As someone who walks around the city, they're delightful, they're really great, just a pleasant reminder that, like, as the mayor said earlier, we are pretty much in the best city in the world. So it's just a nice little reminder as we walk in, aesthetically pleasing, very pretty around the perimeter area, great, just a great idea, whoever did it. Number two, I want to talk about business item number 12 that is on your agenda today. So in preparation of this, I saw one of the things that the City Council will be voting on or approving if it's already not approved is gonna be the Flock, I believe the Flock drone, I think is what's going on. So I've taken a peek at that, I've taken a peek at the contract and actually learned about this first from praise from, I think, Atlanta News first. This is actually a very good idea and looking at the price tag, it's not, it's not unreasonable. From my understanding, especially when you have specialized police drones like that, they do a lot of other special things, I'm probably taking away the deputy chief's son there here, but they do a lot of other specialized things that normal drones don't do, they can fly closer to certain buildings, have certain type of parameters set right there, but ultimately it is a good idea, especially when we consider some of the issues, some of the incidences, and maybe being able to slow down some police code response times or different things along those lines. So I just wanted the record to reflect, from a citizen's perspective, I'm fully in support of this, I think it's a great idea. I'll take the extra step to say that the Dunwoody Police Department, the deputy chief, the chief, to be kind of proactive in this measure, to look at different new innovative ways to keep us safe is good. So on the record, I would like to say, I definitely support the addition of Flock and welcome new initiatives. Moving on to subject number four, we are doing a really good job of retaining and attracting some really good talent in the Dunwoody Police Department. One thing is, we are kinda outgrowing this building, especially for those of you who've driven by, you've noticed there's a ton of police cars outside, I don't know if those are gonna be sold or what they're gonna be, but ultimately, I would imagine that from our initial, I guess, organization as a city, we are probably outgrowing this building. Everyone else, not the follow-up of the Joneses, but everyone else from Chambly, Brookhaven, and Sandy Springs have gone on and built their own specific police station. Again, this is not something that can be done with a click, so if it is something where we can just maybe start window shopping, start looking into some ideas, or maybe just kind of setting up a committee that maybe look into the future, I do think at some point in time, we will end up having to need a new police station.
Thank you. Christopher Wagner, Wagner, I can't, I'm sorry. You can correct me when you join us and you'll have three minutes, sir.
You're perfect, Madam Mayor, thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, Council members, Madam Mayor, all esteemed officials and guests, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here in strong support of the city's ongoing investment in our trail and multi-use path network, particularly the Winters Chapel Trail Extension and the Cherry Hill-Itzen Road Connector. I think these projects are vital, they promote walkability, mental and physical health, and a smart suburban connectivity, they help build the kind of city where families thrive and small businesses grow and people of all ages feel safe and included in these type of areas. I work here in Dunwoody and I live just across the line, actually, in Sandy Springs, near St. Jude the Apostle Catholic Church, regularly visit All Saints though, so I have some credibility, but my office also is at Berkshire Hathaway. My wife teaches and serves in music ministry and she took our blended family of five children out to recon the site and fully endorsed and told me to get over here and speak, so here I am. This is our community and I'm proud to speak not only for myself but on behalf of Berkshire Hathaway Home Services in Dunwoody. We're all supportive of this vision for a more accessible and walkable Dunwoody. Through Berkshire Hathaway, I help lead the Service Stars Rewards Program, which provides real estate rebates and support for veterans, teachers, medical professionals, first responders, and civil servants. It's my mission, those are the only people I serve across the spectrum of real estate, and so serving them and the home buying or business owners, but also we're really focused on beyond the transaction, we wanna work to connect people to their city councils, churches, shout out to VFW, Dunwoody Sandy Springs, Union Halls, community centers, and help root people in the places where they live and serve. And so with that being said, I'm also the Chief Experience Officer at Phaseline, which is a veteran-led special operations community consulting firm, and I recently signed on as CFO and Chief of Staff of the Single Mom Network, I'll get to why that matters, but we're building a community university model that offers wraparound services to help women and their children in crisis to move from survivability to stability, from single mom to six figures. So we're leading that effort, coaching and training component and developing a Single Mom Network basic training to help these families get on their feet. So this is why these trails matter, they're not just about connecting streets, they're about connecting lives. They create room for healthier families, stronger communities, and the kind of planning that benefits everyone long-term. I'm someone who grew up in Peachtree City, Georgia, and I had the gift of 90 miles of golf cart paths winding through protected wetlands and connecting every village, school, and shopping area, and those trails weren't just recreational, they were essential. They built a culture of health, mobility, belonging, and that experience just too much. Thank you for your support.
Zachary Humphreys, you'll have three minutes, sir. And I presume the second card just for the second session tonight, right?
Yeah, it's a two-parter.
Okay.
I'm here today to speak of Sally Hughes, a Cherokee woman of the late 1700s to early 1800s who supposedly did all the right things yet suffered all of the wrong consequences. The land that we stand upon today was once that of the Mesquite, with the Cherokee Nation presiding above the Chattahoochee River, of whose waters flow from the tears of their exile and whose clay soil is red from the blood of the Indians who stood for their existence and humanity. The white men, rich white men of the early United States had a choice to make, what shall we do with the Indians? In their belief of racial and intellectual superiority over the savage Indians, the conversation boiled down to either assimilation into white culture or extermination. Due to the theft of their homelands and the murder of the keepers of oral traditions and education, Cherokee Indians struggled to survive in the new Georgia environment. Famine, hypothermia, and disease were common. Many whites illegally encroached upon Cherokee land and let their cattle free roam, often eating what would be grown and scavenged and destroying the local ecosystem. Any sort of assertion of existence or killing of the free-roaming cattle led to white retaliation and further justification for stripping the Indians of their land. George Washington believed the solution to the existence of the Indians was assimilation into white culture. In 1789, he sent out US Indian agent Benjamin Hawkins to live among the Indians and teach them how to live more like their white neighbors. Indian women were given spinning wheels, men were given modern farming implements. Washington assured that any whites who infringed upon Indian rights or territory would be punished by the US government and would work hand-in-hand with the various tribes to improve their economic status and advance their civilization. In 1796, Hawkins was shocked to find the impoverished village led by Sally Hughes desperately embracing cultural simulation. They had already heard of the resolution by George Washington. Quote, "They exhibited to me a sample of their ingenuity with the manufacture of baskets and sifters out of cane, dyes out of splits, were good and workmanship not surpassed by the United States, in the United States by white people," Hawkins said. Sally Hughes desperately pleaded for the help of her citizens. They needed spinning wheels to make blankets, the youth and elderly were dying from hypothermia. They needed salt, they could not preserve the meat of what little cattle they had. They wanted to explore selling corn and goods for profit, but just like the white man, but importantly, she begged for security and their existence.
Thank you. All right. Sharon, I think you're reading the proclamation. That concludes public comments for this session, we will have another section at the end of the meeting. So, how are we doing this?
Proclamation. Whereas the community of Dunwoody, Georgia rallied to help one another and renew its resolve following a tornado that took alive, destroyed hundreds of Dunwoody homes, and felled more than 100,000 trees on April 9th, 1998. And whereas within just days, the then-fledgling Dunwoody Preservation Trust took the lead by assembling the Replant the Dunwoody Forest Initiative within its own ranks. And whereas the Replant the Dunwoody Forest Initiative proved successful by coordinating the replanting of 25,000 mature native Georgia trees and seedlings at no cost to property owners. And whereas the organization prepared a celebratory event for the community that included a tour of rebuilt and remodeled homes hit by the tornado, plus a 5K race and fun run, carnival games and barbecue. And whereas the celebration named Lemonade Days in commemoration of the mantra, "When life gives you lemons, make lemonade," was followed the next year with a 10-day celebration. And whereas Lemonade Days was moved to Brook Run Park in 2003 and in 2006 was amplified with full-scale carnival rides and games. And whereas Lemonade Days has grown to a much anticipated five-day annual festival loved by children and adults of all ages. And whereas Lemonade Days is the largest fundraiser for the Dunwoody Preservation Trust and its profits have been recirculated back into the community through the maintenance and rehabilitation of historic properties, the education of Dunwoody's history and heritage, and preservation of its stories and assets. And whereas 2025 marks the 25th anniversary of Lemonade Days to be held April 23rd through 27th, 2025, at Dunwoody's Brook Run Park. Now therefore I, Lynn P. Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim April as Lemonade Days Month in honor of the festival's 25th anniversary.
Did you have something you wanted to say? I've sort of started with you, but that's okay, go ahead.
All good.
This is Hope Palmer, the leader of Lemonade Days.
I'm only one of a lot of the village. So, good evening, my name is Hope Palmer and I've had the pleasure of producing the Dunwoody Preservation Trust Lemonade Days Festival for the past 10 years. And on behalf of the DPT, our honorary Miss Lemonade Days Queen, Dolores Lauderdale, who incidentally just let me know that she was the 25th Miss Senior Georgia, I can assure you, our crown did not cost what that did. And as a nonprofit, I want that put out. We'd like to take a moment and to thank the city of Dunwoody for recognizing this milestone achievement of 25 years of festival fun and really for honoring those individuals and organizations who've made it possible. First of all, the founding members of the DPT who created this venture really in the spirit of helping our neighbors. And throughout the years, the hundreds of DPT staff, volunteers, the city of Dunwoody officials and staff, along with the Dunwoody Parks and Recreations and our city's finest, the Dunwoody Police Department, who without their efforts, this would not be possible. We'd like to thank Peachtree Rides, who honestly took a chance on us and 12 years ago set up their Midway Rides in a park that was covered by trees and they just trusted that the community would come. The food and beverage vendors who show up for five days, rain or shine, and sometimes, as we all know, it's been a lot of rain. The thousands of businesses and their sponsorship dollars that have helped us raise the funds for our nonprofit organization to which this is our only fundraiser, to support the DPT's mission of preserving the past, celebrating the present, and planning for the future of Dunwoody. And to the tens and thousands of festival goers, especially those parents who grew up coming to the festival and who now bring their children, they have given us Lemonade Days legacies. It takes a village to produce this event every year. I want to echo what the mayor said, we have an amazing, fantastic village and I think the best in the state of Georgia. Because when Dunwoody gives us lemons, we make lemonade. Thank you again for this sincere honor and we hope to see you next week.
Oh, that's your bag.
My bad.
You would've got a cellphone in that one, though. Here you go. Lemonade Days is one of the events that makes Dunwoody, Dunwoody, it's something that sets us apart. It is a truly special few days and we know that our children look forward, our community's children, look forward to it with tremendous anticipation and we have created a space where they can have a lot of fun and we are eternally grateful for the Dunwoody Preservation Trust for starting this and continuing it, because it is quite an operation, and then also for the other work DPT does for our community and for the volunteers for Lemonade Days, because it absolutely would not happen without y'all. And so thank you very much, Hope, and your team, and we can't wait for Lemonade Days this year. Thank you. Eric, you're up.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, the first thing on my list here is that Lemonade Days, April 23rd through the 27th, so next week, and that is a huge event for the city, as you mentioned, and our Parks Department and all the community. We also have the ribbon cutting will be held on March 27th for Waterford, or was held, excuse me, on March 27th for Waterford Park Playground, that was a great event, largely attended. Also, we have the Kate Borden, our Recreation Manager, was accepted into the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Leadership and Beyond Program. That's a three-day program that consists of classroom work and so we're proud of her for pursuing that, that certificate. We also have Rush Union, our soccer organization, welcomed 160 players for the Spring Adult League, so that's a unique program that we have there. On the movement to the police, on the 4th of March, we had the White Rose Society in conjunction with the Jewish Federation of Greater Atlanta honored Dunwoody Police Department's Deputy Chief Flatterick with a symbolic White Rose Award in gratitude for his support for the Jewish people during these challenging times. So I want to congratulate again Oliver Flatterick for that, for receiving that award, that was great to be recognized by an outside organization and we want to thank him again and thank the organization as well. Also, we had another life was saved in the department using our LifeVac devices. So once again, thanks to the police and the council for providing those to the public. Also, we want to thank our partnership with Sandy Springs Police Department. Eight Dunwoody alumni and three Sandy Springs alumni graduated from the Citizens on Patrol Training Program on March 27th. April 1st marked the 16th anniversary for the city of Dunwoody Police Department. We also have, the police are partnering, our police are partnering with Sandy Springs Police for the annual torch run on April 22nd for the Special Olympics of Georgia, and there's a link in there if anybody else would like to reserve a spot to run in that as well. Also, we have our Fifth Annual Teen Police Academy, takes place July 7th through the 11th, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM daily with lunch provided, and that is free to the teens and it is, there's also a link within this report to apply online. And then we do have our, the graduates from the Citizen Police Academy class will be recognized at the May 27th Council Meeting, so that's coming up in a little bit over a month. So that's also within the police report or is a lot of workload activities, read those in your leisure, and there's a link in the back under data for crime comparison as well. Public Works, we have the Nature Center Wetland Restored 56, a restoration, there's 56 piles have been installed for the boardwalk and deck construction has begun, there's a picture of that in your report. Also, the gateway signs are being installed, we have 11 of the 15 are now in. The final four will go up in the last next 30 days and those will be installed, there's a picture of a sign there as well. These are the vertical signs, the two horizontal- These are the vertical signs. The two horizontal signs were installed previously. And there'll be a sixteenth sign that goes in at a later date, once that piece of land is secured. We also have our Adopt a Stream training for thirteen volunteers. We're interested in bacterial testing in streams, and sixteen volunteers are interested in chemical testing. Here again, this is a new program for the city. We're excited to have a large group who's interested in that program. Uh, paving has started. We're in the Mayfair and Dunwoody North subdivisions, and so that is ongoing now. We also have under Communications, we have the spring issue of the Dunwoody Digest has arrived in your mailbox. Also, we have the State of the City created a video promoting the city, city's, uh, bright, present, and future. So, that was a, um, a great video was put on along with the mayor's State of the City. Community Development, the Comprehensive Plan, Public Workshop will take place on April twenty-second from four-thirty to six-thirty at the Sha, uh, Shallowford Annex. We also have under Economic Development, and this was an announcement that the mayor made at the State of the City, which is Trinets new Dunwoody office is adding eight, seven-hundred-and-fifty new jobs and leasing a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office space right here in Dunway. So, we're very excited and welcome them to the city. Finance, we received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that the city received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the twenty-twenty-three Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award with Special Recognition uh, for the presentation of strategic goals and strategies and its capital program for twenty twenty-five, approved operating in capital budget book. So, here again, a great, um, announcement or award for our finance department. Moving into Municipal Court, uh, Municipal Court, this is the final department I'll report on this evening. But they have disposed of over four-hundred-and-eighty-three cases last month and reset thirty-nine cases. Once again, right here where we sit is Municipal Court, and they do a phenomenal job in their efficiency in moving cases through the system. I'm glad to answer any questions. The majority of the staff is here as well. Y'all have any questions about this report?
Anybody have questions? Catherine.
Thank you, Eric. Do you have an estimated completion date for the Wetlands project? It's gotta be close, because you have the-
Michael, do you have that?
Hard walk in.
Yeah. We think it's in the next-
Gotta be at the microphone, sorry.
I don't have an, uh, exact date, but it's this spring. I know. I can find out.
Thanks.
Yeah, let's find it. We'll email, we'll email the council. I'm sorry, but I don't have that exact date.
That's all right. And the electronics recycling was rescheduled. Do you have the date for that?
Yeah, there was an email-
There was an email sent out to people who are registered.
Right.
Yeah, I believe it's May eighteenth.
Yeah, okay. Sounds familiar.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, John. I'm mixing it up.
Uh, Eric, a couple of questions. Uh, let's go back to the gateway signs. The signs are up. I'm seeing some quality control questions from the public regarding the installation or the manufacturing of them. I guess we've done some quality control to make sure they were all manufactured correctly. Some things that we're seeing is that the word Dunwoody is written Dunwoody down, the D's at the top. Some is the Dunwoody is marked from the D's at the bottom and Dunwoody up. And people are questioning, why is it one way and then the other? So, I'm not sure if that was quality control manufacturing or if that was on purpose. And then the other question people are having is regarding the landscaping around it. I know some of the new ones, the land, full landscaping isn't in yet, but they're already worried about the long-term landscaping. So, those areas, are they going to be landscaped and maintained by the city or the local gas station? Who hasn't maintained it for twenty years?
Right. Those, those will be maintained through the city is our plan on the maintenance for the landscaping, because we put the investment in-
Right.
-as the city, y'all did, the citizens do. So, we will maintain that through our, through our contract. As far as the orientation of the sign, I believe that, I mean, that was done deliberately as part of the overall look, to have a different variety. It is a, it is a personal taste, I guess, on that, on that piece. The installation of the signs themselves had, as far as the, the work, I can assure you the quality control is one hundred percent in terms of the actual structure being mounted into the ground. We're probably one of the few jurisdictions that actually checks the footings for signs and to make sure the concrete strength is where it should be. We've had many discussions about that. But I do have a, and I can send that to y'all in an email, the information from the nice signs, which is who manufactured the signs. They also did a lot of the signs at High Street as well. They are a commercial outfit. They, they made these signs. They've been around for many years. I'd love to send you the information on that, because we wanted to assure that everything was done in a quality fashion from that standpoint. But to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues. And I don't know, Michael, if you want to come up or Jennifer, whoever's talking about the sign and the orientation, because I know that how that was selected, I don't know how that was selected. I'm sorry.
Um, yes, on the vertical signs, uh, a few of them, we had to put on the opposite side of the road. So, as you're driving in, instead of it being on the right, it's going to be on the left. And so, though, the, the designers wanted to have the letters of the sign closest to the roadway instead of them, you know, you've got a vertical post with letters attached. They didn't want the letters on the outside of the post. They wanted them on the, the inside. So, when you move it to the other side of the road, the letters have to read top, from top to bottom to have them closest to the roadway. And then the ones on the right, they read from bottom to top so that they're closest to the roadway.
Interesting perspective. Thank you. The other thing that, the minor thing, the North Peachtree, two eighty-five entrance, the sign is pushed over to one side of the concrete. So, it seems a little odd. So, that was another issue that was raised. Was there a purpose for that?
Good evening, y'all. How are you?
Hello.
Um, so for the North Peachtree sign, um, there's a lot of utilities in that location everywhere. So, it is situated, I guess, in the place where, when you were getting off two eighty-five, you see it. And then there's utilities everywhere. There's like DeKalb County, um, IT, I T S gas everywhere. So, that's why it is situated.
Well, congratulations. I don't remember any fire trucks being on scene, so congratulations as a person.
We did shift it a little bit just based off utility locates too, but that, that's the intent of the designer.
I appreciate it. Again, I'm just seeing questions from-
Yeah.
-public. Um, final issue, Eric, uh, again, Waterford Park ribbon cutting. It's a big, beautiful park. It's got a playground, but it's also the only park that doesn't have sun shells, sails yet. Every other playground, water facility has sun sails. Is that, uh, in the plans in the sense of shade structure for that playground?
You know, to my knowledge, it's not, I don't see Rachel here tonight. That's not part of that current plan at that park. Now, if that's something y'all would like to do, we can certainly budget for that and put that in in the future. It is something, you know, the shade elements, we've added to several parks as time has gone on to kind of see how people, where they want and-
I think they're at every part.
We have put them in, but we usually put them in after the fact. And if it's something that we'd like to put in at a different time, and I don't know, I know that, um, Councilman Lambert has had a lot to do with that park. I don't know if there's any additional feedback on shade structures there, or, but we can certainly do that.
Uh, yeah, I haven't had anyone reach out to me directly regarding that. I know there are a lot of trees nearby. I don't know if that factored into the, where there's some just natural shade there. But, um, I think obviously we should evaluate how much sun is there and, because we want it to be usable and not get extremely hot for the kids that'll be using that. So, I think we should evaluate that and if in fact-
I just wanted to let you know that there was public comment to me about the lack of sunshade.
And, and we have found that when we don't put them in, we get, as, once it's summer, people stop using them, and also, um, we get complaints, so.
And we can certainly look at that, Mayor, and, uh, we have the nice pavilion there.
Right. Well, it's the-
The playground, though, does not have any additional shade.
And maybe we can find a company that can actually do it.
Summer shorts.
Yeah, right.
Understood.
Right. Um, uh, Rob.
So, I'm, I guess I'm gonna shift away from fun stuff like playgrounds. And just something that jumped out at me when I was reading this was that one of our residents lost over two-hundred thousand dollars to a fraud-
Yes.
-incident. Uh, I, I'm wondering, is there anything we can do to get some more information out in the community? Create some sort of handout that could be on the police department website or could be at city events for friends and family that might just want to pass it to someone. I don't know that it would prevent these, but if we could prevent one, I mean, that's a, that's a quality of life level of money that this person lost. And so, just, just a thought and a recommendation.
It's a, that's a great thought, and it's something, I know that, uh, and Oliver, if you want to come up a moment, and Jay, if you'll get, have Oliver come up real quick. What I want to say on that is, we do have a group that talks about, uh, you know, some of the places that Dunwoody- Not that this person was elderly or not, but the elderly seem to be more in line with these kind of abuses. And also people who have the scam, and the other thing are the people who do the, um, the blackmail type things. And, uh, DC, we were talking about the, um, the person that was, uh, lost two-hundred-something thousand dollars to a scam. If there's anything additional, I know Jennifer could also put some stuff on the website in terms of people's awareness. But that also, how, it's always hard, how do we reach that sector of the public? You know, that, that really needs that information, because it's happened to numerous people, people that I've known as well. And it's tragic that people take your money in that fashion.
My, my thought is maybe we just have a source of information. I mean, it's gonna have to be friends and family that probably make that connection, but just have something easy for people to grab, to share, and, and maybe prevent one of these in the future.
We'll be glad to work on that. The latest trend that we've seen is there's a little bit of a give and take, where the contact is made either through a WhatsApp text or a normal text, email, those kinds of stuff, those kind of things. And then there's a small investment that pays off. It gets some more, it pays off. And before you know it, they're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And some of these are way up there, and even the two-hundred thousand. But yes, we'll certainly look at that and hit that out. Thank you.
Joe.
Thanks for the part. I'll, I'll stick to, uh, let's, let's continue on with the lighting signs. So, the lights are going to be installed, right? So, what's that timeline of getting the lights installed on that one?
Yeah, Tiffany may have, have that as well, or David, because they've been working closely with Georgia Power to get power to those sites. And as I, David, and as I mentioned earlier too, I know he's done an outstanding job on getting the foundations correct on these signs. I think he actually, um, taught the sign company a few things about concrete, but nonetheless.
So, thank you. Uh, yeah, the, the lights are a little bit more challenging. I mean, we've certainly get electricity, but we're trying to, uh, light them from other methods. Some, we have some that we've lit through our traffic signals. In that way, we don't have to actually go through Georgia Power. But there's other applications where we actually do have to go through Georgia Power. We don't have a, a source of electricity close by that we can pull off of. And it's, it's a relatively slow process for Georgia Power. We also have to provide some of the infrastructure for them, uh, to save, uh, money for the city. Uh, so the lights will come soon, but I do not have a timeline for that. I have, uh, the next four lights, uh, the most recent lights are in the works, which would be Hammond, uh, Mount Vernon, and Spaulding. We have a plan for Spaulding. Uh, I've met with Georgia Power on Hammond and Mount Vernon, but I haven't heard back from them on how they want to provide electricity. The, we have a plan for, uh, Robert Strive. I have a plan for, uh, North Peachtree, and I have a plan for, uh, North Shallowford and all. And then the others, uh, we, we had to be in contact with Georgia Power. We, we try to look to see if we can do it ourselves through some of our own sources, but, uh, the lighting will come a little bit slower. I remember it took us, uh, to get the power on at the Georgetown sign, which was the, the, the one in Georgetown Gateway. It took us about eight weeks to actually get power to that. So, each, each one of the installations are, are kind of unique. Uh, but we do have a plan for power.
Do, are we, um, obviously it's site-dependent if there's enough sun, but are you investigating solar?
We, we have looked at solar specifically for the, uh, Prim Center West, because that might be one of the more difficult places to try to, to try to actually get infrastructure over to that median. So, we are looking at that as well.
Okay. Um, and this is more of an ask of Eric. I, I personally would also like to get that Dunwoody Mosaic sign on, on Womack in front of the library lit. And you can go over to Home Depot and buy some landscape lighting that's solar for about thirty or fifty bucks and stick it out there and just stick it in the sod. Could, could you potentially just look into doing something low-tech for that? It's such a beautiful thing, the mosaic there. Um, you can see it during natural daylight, but you, you miss it at the nighttime, and it's just something beautiful to continue, uh, showing our, showing off our town.
Absolutely. We'll take, we'll take a look at that sign and how to light that, because there are different technologies out there, to your point, for the lighting and solar would probably be a good way to go.
You know, just think low-tech. I'm seriously going online, and I was gonna just do it and put it there myself and see if it stayed.
We'll take care of that.
Um, and just, um, I, I don't like to get into the art. That's why we have an art commission. I don't want to get into subjective, subjectivity, but we did come off, I think it was just last night, come off of, uh, saw the new sign on North Peachtree at Cotillion on the, on the access, on the drive. But I knew it was there, but my wife couldn't see it because there was a car there, and it's just low. So, I don't know. We'll, we'll wait and see, obviously, but it's, it's just only, it's just a couple of feet above the ground, and it's horizontal, and it's a smaller. So, look, I'll let everything percolate, but maybe ended up raising that sucker somehow or another. But I don't know what we'd have to do to do that, if that's a, a need, or I'll wait to, if you hear more feedback, I'll just leave it out there. Thanks. Um, I got a couple of the questions, Eric, on just, um, uh, the public. Well, the parks thing, the Waterford Park, are we working also on the path to Kingsley, the footpath over there?
That is a great question, and the answer is absolutely. Um, Jay and Nikki is, he's my spot person for that path. And there's some new developments that have occurred there since Georgia Power was doing their project for the power line, insulator, uh, exchange, as I call it. And so, they were changing those, and they've done some work at Kingsley Swimming Tennis, and they're gonna be paving the parking lot over there. So, we're trying to work in coordination with Georgia Power and Kingsley to put in the path, uh, trailhead off the road through the parking lot. We also want to get, go ahead and finalize, and we met with Georgia Power a couple of weeks ago, about the part of the path that's on Georgia Power's side of that property, which is under the power line. They said, no problem. They'll give us the easement there. We also have, that leaves one final piece, which is the piece behind, what I call behind the tennis courts, that runs down towards the park. And that's what we're trying to work on, uh, uh, the last element. Michael Smith has put together a proposal to get a final map drawn. I've asked staff just this morning, we, we had a discussion on it, to go ahead and finalize that entrance of the trail, what I call the trailhead to that parking lot, because that's the only critical piece right this moment, as they're redoing the paving. That needs to be lined off and coordinated now. Georgia Powers, my, my understanding with Georgia Powers, they're gonna enhance the lot size there slightly. Now, I'm talking about this like we own it. It is Kingsley's, but we are trying to work very closely with them. And I don't know if Michael, if you or Jay have anything to add on that, or if that sums it up. Okay.
And just like one more. So, you know, I say, keep on harping on the Mount Vernon and Tilly Mill project. And as I continue on this, uh, continue on in my, in, in serving on council, I used to just look at the budget, and when it was way out of the budget there, I just thought it would be constructed. And, you know, so we've had these, the monies in the bank to build this project fully constructed as of last December, the pay-as-you-go model. I'd like to just leapfrog to the next project. Whatever's in the pipeline in our five-year CIP, are we doing right-of-way acquisition now? Are we asking utility? I'd really like to hear how aggressively we could start being proactive on these projects. We're waiting for Georgia Power to, to, to get easements now. We're waiting on Georgia Power to move you to. What's our next project after Mount Vernon and Tilly Mill? And, and, and are we, where are we with that now? I don't even know where, what that is on a Public Works project. And, and can we kind of start leapfrogging these things and having like updates? What's, it's gonna take two more years to do, uh, but you know, this project takes a long time.
Sure.
Right? But I'd like to hear where we know in the pipeline, without just going in the budget and look at the CIP.
Let me get a report back to you all on that.
That would be great, Eric.
And we can do, we can do an update at a future meeting.
Just want to be as proactive as we can, because it, you know how long it takes-
Yes.
-for Georgia Power, moving utilities and everything. Yeah, great. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for your report. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, I also wanted to raise the, uh, issue of fraud, and I think that based on our survey, the most widely read, widely, uh, referenced form of communication is the digest, the one we mail. I don't know if there could be an opportunity for PD to work with our communications department to put something in there, um, because, uh, it's scary, and that's a lot of money, and that's a shame. Okay. All right. That concludes Eric's report. And next, I believe, hold on, I gotta turn the page, is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion on anything here?
I have a question.
Okay.
It's fine for Eric or Ginger. This is about the Microsoft licenses. The, the cost you are asking for one-thirty, and the- The the cost you are asking for one thirty and the The paperwork attached is a hundred and two, which is not a hundred and thirty ever, so.
Correct. Yes. So actually, the reason that the amount is a little bit over is because we are kind of estimating that there's potential that we will have to Add in additional space for SharePoint and additional licenses for users and things like that. So we want to do accommodate the growth so that we don't have to come back to you guys again in a couple of months and ask for a little bit more money to accommodate that later.
Okay, and is this an increase from last year?
Um, so the pricing is very similar. It is a little bit of an increase, and the reason that it has gone up some is because we are now using SharePoint. Um, and we have more of our files and things like that in the cloud version, and so it has increased a little bit, and we have more users as well.
All right, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else seeing none? I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Uh, that passes unanimously. Thank you. I get to read this one right, Sharon.
The next item on the agenda is approval of a six month trial agreement with Flock Safety Deputy Chief Frederick.
Move to approve.
Well, but he has to do the presentation first. But thank you.
The mayor and council, as you know, uh, your council chambers are actually right underneath the location of the drone right now. Uh, we have been um, very fortunate that Glock was kind enough to let us fly this drone line of sight. Um, in this implementation phase, and we are asking for the funds to be released To uh, help us pay for the drone, basically for the last six months of this year. Uh, I'm sure most of you have had or all of you have had the opportunity to see the video that Flock put together for us specifically About a an arrest case that we had right here. Uh, since then, we've had obviously a lot more successes as well, and we expect a lot more of those in the future. The uh, the exciting thing is that even though all our supervisors on patrol are part one oh seven FAA Uh, certified, um, we're also expecting the FAA to sign off on a radar unit that will be on the eight IHG building, on the IHG building. Which will allow us to rein in aircraft avoidance and uh, will make this a lot easier to fly. Uh, this is a unit that we can totally deploy from the field once everything is in play. And is an amazing force multiplier along with our camera systems and license plate readers.
All right, questions, Stacy?
So And I remember hearing that the the It doesn't won't necessarily reach the east side of town from here. So I guess my, really my question is about lemonade days. And if we're able to deploy The drone over lemonade days, because that's obviously thousands of people and I imagine would be.
So we can fly there.
Okay.
That's not a problem. And, you know, obviously there are warning indicators too when the battery goes low, and a lot of that depends on on wind and We have some experts back here like Lieutenant Tim Fact and Uh, also one of the representatives from Flock, if you'd like to get some more Uh, super in-depth details, but uh, you know, we we can certainly utilize that piece of machinery There, we have most of our issues, as you know, obviously in the perimeter center area, which is easy to get to. But flying the Brooklyn is is not gonna be an issue.
Anybody else? John?
I'll jump on that same subject, because I too had those same concerns. At our retreat, Deputy Chief, you mentioned the Flock system and how it would Really do well closer to City Hall where it's being deployed. It goes out, it has some video time, it's able to see some stuff with the video. The battery starts to run down, it then runs back to City Hall, it exchanges a new battery and goes back.
Correct.
So At our retreat, you mentioned basically it would serve this area perimeter really well, but as it gets closer to the east side of Dunwoody, It's gonna be harder and harder to deploy. It was actually a conversation that we would probably need to to properly cover the city. Do you see, as far as your conversation now, I'm hearing you say that it could serve Brook Run, but I'm not sure for what time. I don't want to set expectations for the entire city of Dunwoody to be ready to have flock drone coverage. When in reality, it sounds like from what I heard previously, that the west side would be covered a lot stronger than the east side based on the battery life Of the drone coverage.
Battery life and obviously also, uh, you you know, use cases, because most of our activity Uh, is is focused right here around the perimeter center area. As far as the the time on station on the very east side of the city, that is certainly diminished by A a rather lengthy flight out there. And again, weather conditions make a big difference. If it's a heavy wind situation, That drone has to fight a lot harder against wind and and also come back.
Correct. So if there's gunshots at Peachtree Industrial and Winter Chapel, it's gonna be a a long flight, and it's gonna be Just a harder case study for that.
I mean, we would certainly love to have a second drone. Absolutely. You know, and this is part of the first implementation phase That we would like to see here. Uh, it it, we're also a pilot project For uh, the company Aerodome that uh, is connected to Flock. And there are a lot of things that will obviously still be uh, explored, and and we all know how technology is within a year. We're talking about a completely different system that'll have much more power and
No, Chief, I'm excited about the program. I'm just want to make sure that we're setting expectations that It's not the be all end all for all sections of the city, and they're still, where are we gonna find the money for it for next year? That's the other thing for me, but that's that's a different conversation.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Rob?
Uh, I'm gonna bring up an issue that I also raised during the um, The retreat, just again, just to to have it out there. I I like this program. I think it's great for the city. Um, I I would like to see the policy about appropriate use maybe be publicly available, just so that our citizens Sure. Can have assurance that nobody's spying on them in their backyard without a legitimate police purpose. Um, I have all the faith that you guys will use this properly, but just You know, people have an expectation of privacy, so I think they ought to they ought to understand how we're planning to use this, so they can You know, appreciate that we're taking that into consideration, so.
Yes, sir. And and we also don't have the staff to constantly fly that drone twenty four seven.
Like I said, I I I totally expect it to be used properly, but I could I could see people having a concern, and I want them to at least be able
Of course.
Where can I look to see what the
We have the same concern, so we we share that.
Rob? Uh, yeah, DC, uh, so you actually Provided a perfect segue to one of my questions, uh, the staff. So how many pilots do we have? Do we have a plan to To get more uh, of the the police staff trained as a pilot so that we can utilize this tool as often as as needed?
Yes, absolutely. So right now, you know, again, we're in this implementation phase, and our patrol supervisors are currently the ones that are certified to fly Uh, the drone. Um, you know, this is again, like any piece of machinery, the more you do it, the better you get at it. Um, and, you know, we certainly want to do things right by the numbers. Um, there is ultimately a vision that we will hopefully have the real time crime center staffed More so on a full basis to where those those folks out of that center could even fly it. You know, but again, this The, like we said before, the RTCC will never be finished. There will always be new technology. There will be new upgrades. There'll be Better ways to do it. And I think what we're seeing today will, and when we look back at it in five years, we'll sort of kind of smile about that and Wonder how we made it five years ago, right? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and and so to kind of echo some of it, I fully support this program. Uh, we've seen the video, and I actually got the opportunity to see it In in action a little bit with the Student City Council and the Real Time Crime Center and seeing it go up, and the capabilities it has is is really amazing. Um, not only for a safer community, but really uh, for our police officers as well, you know, giving them that That kind of recon ability to get in before they enter a situation. Um, I mean, it's really has a potential to for to save lives. Uh, so I think this is a very important program. I I've, so with that said, I hope that Our testing of this proves to be very successful, and this is something that we can uh, we can fund uh, going in the future. I have I have a Just a a question. I just want to clarify, uh, on the memo, it said that we have, we're gonna be The hundred thousand is for the six for six months, and then we'll have the opportunity to to re- renew it. Uh, but when I read the contract, It sounded like the contract is actually for a full year, but just with two payments. So I just want to clarify that if we approve this, we're actually committing to And I, and again, I'm I'm hoping fully, hopefully that we have that extra hundred thousand dollars for next year, but we're actually committing to a full year. Is that?
Right now, we're committing to six months.
Okay.
This is for, because basically the 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 initial program was slated to sort of be a freebie the first beginning of the year.
Right.
And then for us to pay the latter half of this year. And uh, essentially, we we also, you know, if if we're Really gonna go forward with this, we really want to be on a calendar year anyway.
Right.
And uh,
And I and I'm hoping that that's it's not even an issue that we go, we have the funding available and we we approve it. I just want to make sure, can can legal review the contract? Because it, the way I read it, it sounded like we are committing to a full year uh, with two payments, and I just want to be sure that If for some reason it doesn't work out in the next six months, that we're not on the hook for a hundred thousand dollars.
We also have a thirty day uh, cancellation policy in there.
Uh, I understand, but if that thirty days would be August, I again, and I I'm not trying to poo poo anything here. I'm hoping this is successful. I just want to make sure that we Have covered our bases. If for some reason this isn't what we Believe it is, or for some reason funding is not there, I just want to make sure that we Understand what we're getting, and and again, and not in any way trying to Diminish what this is, and hopefully we can do it. I just want to make sure that the contract is what we expect it to be.
I'll I'll be go ahead and look at it.
Okay.
It it's been legally reviewed, but I don't, can't pull it up on my phone, unfortunately, but I'll vet it.
Yeah, there's there's a, on page twelve of the uh, the document, there's a note about invoice three on one one twenty twenty six For a hundred thousand dollars. That's, I think, what
Yeah, because it says the term shall be from seven one twenty twenty five to six thirty twenty twenty six.
All right, so we'll get this straight. Um, and bring it back. I need a mo, I mean, it's Uh, because we're, go ahead. You can ask your question.
So I, and I, again, I'm supportive of this. I just want to make sure I understand, like The capability. So the Fourth of July parade lasts two hours. Can it fly over the parade route the entire time?
So again, depending on the wind.
Okay.
You know, and and how much that'll drain the battery down. Uh, our plan is to have it flying. And at some point, yes, I mean, it can't be out there for two hours straight, you know, so.
So approximately, how long can it be?
Probably thirty minutes to forty forty minutes.
And then it has to come recharge.
And 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 again, that may just be
Well, get a new battery, yeah.
Yeah, and and it's just come back, comes back here, lands, docks, less than two minutes, and it comes back out with a new battery.
Okay, so I'm just honestly thinking, so can it fly in a storm, just knowing that Eyes in the sky, like where are the power lines down? What is going on there? Can it fly in a storm or no?
So storms are probably, you know, those those few moments when we're gonna go, maybe not.
Okay.
You know, just because that The i- i- it's not, it's not a helicopter that can power through all that.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, when two eighty five becomes a hot mess, how long can it be out there before it has to, okay? So thirty forty minutes, normal flight time, come back, change the battery, go back out. Is that what I'm Understanding?
Again, depending on how far it is away from its from its base here. Obviously, because we want to make sure it comes back on time, so.
Does it know to do that?
Yeah, it knows to do that. Yeah, I'm being facetious.
Okay, thank you.
I I can answer a question now, thanks to somebody's computer. I don't know how I'm borrowing. The effective date is the date of execution, so the opt out period would be thirty days, like you said, Tom, as I read this. So that means the opt out period, custom will have thirty days opt out after the effective date. So I think we need to probably modify that if we're trying to have an effective date That is thirty days before the end of the pilot, because this reads as if it's thirty days after the effective date of the agreement. That makes sense. So if it's the, yeah, and
I I think the solution to this, if we want to vote on it tonight, is to use the words That the council authorizes the mayor or whatever the language is to sign the contract after it's approved by legal. Does that work instead of trying to edit it up here?
Can it, yeah, before you pass that motion, can I just get a point of clarification? It, well, I think the intent here is They want to, before they fully implement, they want to know you're in. It sounds like what we want to do is test it for that six month period.
That's all we have funding for Right now, right? That's all we have funding for. We haven't done our budget for next year, so we don't want a contract that With any illusion that it commits us for twenty twenty six, and they're saying Uh, it appears that the contract has some language. We're not gonna fix it up here tonight. We're gonna word the motion in such a way that I'll sign the contract once we've approved it.
Is that gonna be detrimental to, the reason why I ask is, this does presume the pilot leads into the next year.
Right.
It may not be something I can fix, is what I'm trying to tell you.
You can answer us, sir, from Flock. You can address us at the microphone if you want to clarify what we're talking about.
Sure. So thank you, Steve Hampton from Flock Safety. The uh, initial pilot period is happening now, so we've we've been flying the drone, or they've been flying drones since January.
Right.
So that agreement was worded to cover a pilot period from January to June, Which is followed by a uh, a twelve month term, which we've broken into two separate payments to align with your fiscal year.
They didn't address the opt out, though.
Well, we're committing, the way I read the contract is we're committing to A minimum of twelve months with the option to renew at the same rate for an additional twelve months. And that's why I wanted to clarify, because it it was it was not consistent with what The memo said, and it for, you know, it's a difference of a hundred thousand dollars. I just want to make sure we knew what we were approving.
Do we have the, okay. Um, Well, since the pilot's through June, we can bring it, we have choices here. We can Use the language I suggested, or we can defer it, whatever. Um, and What um, what's yours, what's y'all's pleasure? And then I had a question.
So so the way that, I I did, I know this is taking a minute, but it's worth taking a minute to get it right. The effective date per this contract is when this order form is signed, is thirty days based on the way it reads. Pilot term three months, initial term twelve months, renewal term twenty four months. The problem is the opt out period is what we're trying to get right. And I'm not convinced that you should approve this till we know what that opt out period is.
Okay, all right, so then we need to Yeah, Joe didn't have a motion.
Can I suggest this, ma- ma-
Yes.
Move to something else and let them go talk in the back.
I'm not doing that. We don't, there's no urgency. We can come back in two weeks and do this again, so we're not gonna Work on it in here. Um, But we need, because it's a bit action item, we need a motion to
Uh, make a motion to table to the April twenty eighth meeting.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion or questions? Yes, I have one. Um, I want to understand, it's for Flock. I want to understand the potential Of Over time, as more municipalities and, well, DeKalb County is looking at, I don't know you or your competitor, but assuming that our neighboring cities adopt Flock. We're all gonna have areas where, especially if we're big, like, you know, Sandy Springs, Lord, who knows, because they're forty four square miles or something, but is Is there a way to inter- interconnect the technology? So if Doraville gets one and it has the capacity to come on into Dunwoody, Can it come into Dunwoody and give reports to our department?
That would be between the agencies.
Okay, so but there's no rules from Flock that that's a, again, so if DeKalb County Decides to choose Flock, and I have no idea what they're looking at or how they're gonna fund it or anything, Will it be possible, and everybody else, which also isn't gonna happen, but everybody else adopts it, is there a way to have one big network To share information?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they currently use it. It's called Flock OS.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor uh, to table it till the next meeting. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none? Uh, the motion carries. Thank you. We will see you in two weeks. Appreciate your time. Next up is discussion items, so I can do these. Tiffany Segal.
They've opened the PowerPoint for me.
Okay, they did.
Okay. Y'all can see it, right?
Yes, we can see it, and you, we'll need you to adjust the microphone so that we can hear you better. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the contract amendment with Practical I'm here to present the contract amendment with Practical Design Partners of, for the Winter's Chapel Path Phase Two from Charmont Place to Peeler Road. The Winter's Chapel Path Phase One and Two were both identified in the twenty-fifteen Winter's Chapel Road area study, where Dunwoody and Peachtree Corners came together to evaluate the Winter's Chapel corridor and to create a cohesive plan for implementation of projects in the area. This area study included public involvement, and a workshop was held to obtain community feedback and comments. This plan was then adopted by both cities. Construction of Phase One of the Winter's Chapel Path was completed in twenty-twenty-three, which runs from the Dominique Club Drive to Charmont Place. The engineering contract for concept design of Phase Two of the Winter's Chapel Path was approved by council in May of twenty-twenty-four. This is the in-progress preferred concept, which is consistent with what was recommended in the Winter's Chapel Road area study and the Trail Master Plan. The project will consist, will construct bike and pedestrian facilities on the west side of Winter's Chapel Road from Charmont Place to Peeler Road, and is about point-six miles in length. This project is federally funded and therefore will be following the GDOT process for approval. A few items I would like to point out on the layout include, first, the Winter's Chapel Road southbound right turn onto Peeler Road is currently a slip lane. However, this layout shows removal of the slip lane and converting the right turn to a traditional right turn at the signal. This will enhance safety for the pedestrians and bikes utilizing this facility, and will also help address speed management along the corridor. Additionally, there is a proposed signal at the Sumac and Winter's Chapel intersection, which meets signal warrants for rural traffic volumes and delay. Ultimately, GDOT will have to approve this method of being, this method of using rural traffic volumes for the signal to be approved. This will also provide a safe crossing for pedestrians and bikes onto the path. If not approved, we will look for an alternative safe crossing solutions like an RRFSB.
Uh, I'm sorry, what's in?
RRFSB, uh, rectangular, rubber, flashing, flashing beacon, uh, there's a lot throughout Dunwoody.
Okay, I just didn't know the acronym.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, uh, so, uh, this is the proposed typical section with a path on the west side of Winter's Chapel Road, which includes a twelve-foot multi-use path lighting along the corridor and landscape buffers. Um, we are currently working on the concept of design, which is in progress. This contract would be through final design and complete the engineering design for this project. The contract will include public involvement and provide an approved environmental document, which is required for federally funded projects, right-of-way plans, and final plans. Additionally, the contract includes construction services support, which will provide design services during construction if needed. The fee for completing the final design for Phase Two of the Winter's Chapel Path, including a five percent design contingency, is seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, ninety-four, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. The city was awarded six-hundred thousand dollars in federal funding for preliminary engineering design from ARC in early twenty-twenty-five. The federal award, along with the local match, will cover the funding for this project. Currently, the city has allocated seven-hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-twenty-five budget for this project. I wanted to share the schedule with you. Um, so the concept design started in July of twenty-twenty-four and will be completed in October of twenty-twenty-five with the approval of the concept report by GDOT. The Public Information Open House will be hold, will be held in February of twenty-twenty-six. Right-of-way is scheduled to start in January of twenty-seven and will be completed in April of twenty-twenty-eight, which is a little bit over a year, and construction activities are anticipated to start in fall of twenty-twenty-eight. We recommend the approval of a contract amendment for the final design to PDP for seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars, ninety-four. I can't even say that.
That's okay, you could, we, we, really, you should round.
Okay, I'm, I know, I learned that lesson on.
Right, you should round, it's all good, but we, it's good, thank you.
We're approving approvals.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna start with my question, and it's gonna be a really downer question. So my contacts at ARC say they're struggling to get reimbursements for projects that they've already outlaid money on. And I am very concerned, Eric, that this is a large amount of money. So this isn't seventy thousand dollars that they owe us outstanding, standing. Once we sign a contract, we are obligated for that six-hundred thousand dollars to the, to the, the contractee. Yeah, whoever, right, yeah. And I'm really worried, because what I, my sense is, is that at any minute, the, uh, rug could be pulled out from under any of us, we're seeing it all over the country. And I don't, I don't know how to proceed with this uncertainty, because it's, do we have six-hundred? My presumption is, is once we sign the, once I sign the contract, or we do the update, my presumption is, is that we are obligated for the amount, whether the federal government re, reimburses us or not.
But the contract, you're, you're correct, Mayor, the contract is with the, the vendor.
It's with PDP.
Right, no, I understand that. So my concern is, is that, like, just today, they sent, I don't remember the number, but it was in eighty billion or something, cuts to cap, to the, up to the capital, the administration did. And I don't know how any of us, any mayor in the country, that get, has any project that's dependent on significant federal dollars, is handling the uncertainty, because we are not a city that has six-hundred thousand extra dollars to spend. And it's, I'm not upset with you, I'm totally upset with the situation. And like I said a few weeks ago, I heard from someone at the Regional Commission that their reimbursements, I don't know if they've been made whole yet, but they were lagging. And so I don't know what we do with this information. I know we got the grant, I got the letter, which I guess we've known already. Um, because we just, I don't think we have it. I mean, we could find it, go ahead.
This is maybe a question for, for Ken about what sort of agreement we have with ARC.
But if ARC, ARC has, I've done ARC work, I mean, I've done all these committees with ARC, they don't really have any money, that's why they charge to participate in all their program, not like their one-day seminars on housing or the environment, but, you know, your, their leadership programs and everything, there's a fee, and that's why they want you to raise money once you finish, because they don't have any money. So I don't, we can hold ARC accountable, but they can't give us the money. And Sandy Springs got eight million dollars in this round, I think, or multiple millions. But the difference is, is their budget is like five times, ten times our budget. So, um, so the question, my question is, Eric, what do we do? Because if we sign this contract, then we're oblig, and they start the work, we're obligated.
Yeah, I think when you look at, is there, and I saw Michael coming up, I don't, Tiffany, you may know, is there, hold, hold on a second, is there a timeline, though, I'm sorry? Is there a timeline that we can defer until, for future? And, or do we, when do we have to accept it by? Because I think, Mayor, part of the concern is the uncertainty, not to say the uncertainty will change anytime soon, but what are our options on deferring the acceptance of the funds?
The acceptance of the funds, it's the problem, it's the, if the problem is signing this contract and then having to pay six-hundred thousand dollars to this contractor for design work that they complete, and we never get reimbursed? Because it's, so again, you know, I have, I've been like such a broken record about what is out there, and it's not very much, like, we're not waiting for very much reimbursement. But, and maybe it's all come in, I have no idea, but it wasn't, it was maybe seventy thousand dollars or something, it was, it was not a lot of money. But to, to start down the path of this project, um, with the, with just so much uncertainty, I, I don't know what, I don't know, I just don't know how to proceed.
And, and Mayor, I guess that, that's what I was, my question, and maybe I stated it incorrectly, but I was saying, when's the last date that we can accept the funds? So we know when we can start the contract? Or defer the contract until what date?
Can I add something, and then answer that?
Sure.
Um, so Michael said that when we, um, do reimbursements, it's on a monthly basis. If the funding got pulled, we could put PDP on hold?
Is that language in the contract? Will that language be in the contract with PDP?
Not sure.
He needs to, I'm sorry, it has to be answered at the microphone.
Let Michael answer.
That's fine, I'm sorry, I, I know that I feel like I'm like the Grinch, but I just.
Yeah, so this contract will be spread out over, I think, two years, based on the schedule you presented up there. And so they, they work monthly, the co, the consultant will bill us monthly, and then we turn around when we pay them, and then we ask for reimbursement from the state. So at any time, if we feel like the money's been pulled, federal money's been pulled, or we're, you know, not getting reimbursed, we can always put the consultant on hold and say, we're, we're not moving in further, any further forward. So it's, we're not, we are signing a contract for seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, but it doesn't mean that we are gonna owe them seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand until they actually do the work. And we can put them on hold at any time, and that will.
And that will be in the contract.
And the contract has a, a termination clause in it.
Right, but we still would have to pay them for the work they completed.
Yeah.
Okay, what are your, what are you hearing from your peers? Are you hearing anything? I know it's been spring break and I, but.
Not, not really anything specific, uh, I mean, all I can go by really is that the money that we've submitted for reimbursement, you know, in the last few months, we are, we are getting paid. I mean, we do have a little bit outstanding, like you mentioned, but, but those were just recently submitted, so, um, we're not, we're not hearing that, you know, the money is, is being cut, has, is being with.
Right.
Withdrawn. And in fact, this money that, um, the six-hundred thousand that we're going to use to cover this, the ARC board just approved that, uh, at the end of March, I think.
Yeah, I just got the letter after that meeting.
So, and it, I mean, it is, you know, there is more uncertainty now than maybe other times, but, but this, this kind of thing has come up before, where, you know, they don't pass a federal reauthorization bill, I mean, ARC has to make assumptions about what future funding is gonna be, even before, sometimes before they're certain they're gonna get it, and then if they don't, they have to adjust their program.
Okay, thank you. Joe.
Um, Tiffany, do, do we, what interaction do we have with Peachtree Corners on this project? I know we signed a, uh, MOU with them or something last year, but ongoing, are they getting this kind of presentation too? I don't know if they have any funding requirements on, yeah, are they maybe involved? And I think you can remind me, do they have any funding contribution at all from Peachtree Corners on this project?
They are involved, we've, they've been joining our GDOT meetings, um, we've shown them the layout, um, they're providing feedback, this part of the project is in Peachtree Corners, and they are funding the right-of-way in their, uh, area.
And Joe, I can just, I've, I've had conversations with two of the council members in Peachtree Corners, the two of them fully support this project, and it assured me that their council fully supports this project. I, I, I was communicating with Eric, Eric, Eric Chris over the weekend too, and Eric said he fully supports this project, uh, um, so that was interesting. Back to the project schedule, it kinda chimes in when I was talking to Eric about, you know, just city manager stuff. Could you put a, put that slide back on there, the project schedule for me for a second, please? Um, I don't need like to have a project plan or a, a, a Hert diagram or a critical path, but a, a project, uh, you know, task list, but it just looks like such a long, long time involved here, where I, you know, maybe you can come back and give us, what are the, you know, from a project manager perspective, what's the prerequisite? Of, why, why do we wait till winter twenty-two-six for open house? Why do we wait to right-of-way acquisition till, is that completion or starting? I'd, I'd like to know, maybe not at this comp meeting, but, you know, what's on behind all of this from a prerequisite, having things happen? You know, what, what are the interdependencies would, would be helpful?
So this is a GDOT project, so not like our local lab projects where we have more flexibility, um, this is, the schedule is set by GDOT, we're following their process. So that's, it's a little bit more drawn out than some of our local projects. Um, and the right-of-way acquisition with GDOT, we have to go through a lot of GDOT reviews, they see everything and approve things, and then we can move forward. So the schedule seems very long, because there's a lot of requirements in GDOT review, review due to it, us having federal funds for this project.
And is there in the summary or in the packet, that, the list, the amount of the total federal dollars that we're gonna be receiving? What's, like, the total project cost? And then, here's the, here's the total net, net, and then what, what is the federal portion total?
Are you talking about for just design, or are you talking about construction, everything?
Everything, cuz I, you know, cuz I, you know, we've had these conversations in the past about, eh, maybe we just don't go for federal funding on some of these things and just do it splosted, so we can move forward a little bit quicker, right? Because you're spending a lot more money upfront to do things, and it takes a lot longer. So that's the total, total project cost for the whole project is?
So we did receive one-point-five million dollars in federal funds for construction for this project. So our current federal funding, including the six-hundred thousand, is two-point-one million dollars for this project.
Two-point-one million federal total?
Yes, and, um, based off some estimates, um, the city's funding would be two-point-seven million for construction, including construction, everything.
Two-point-seven, plus the two-point-one?
Yes, or.
So the total project cost, four, four, about five mil, wow. Okay.
The estimate.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Tiffany, if you could go to the, um, the, kind of, the design slide, yeah, that one. Um, and before you talked about the Sumac intersection, you talked about another one that something was being taken away and added, I, I didn't quite understand.
Can you see my cursor?
The slip line.
Can you see my cursor?
Yes, now I can, okay.
Sorry if I, sorry if I didn't explain that well. Um, so this is the Peeler-Winters Chapel intersection. Currently, um, when you're going, when you're trying to, when you're traveling southbound on Winter's Chapel, going to Peeler, there is a slip lane that you just keep going straight in.
Yes.
So that's the slip lane I was talking about, and right now, our, our, our layout shows removing the slip lane and making it a, a right turn at the signal to increase safety and help slow people down.
Thank you, that, that makes perfect sense, I just, was not there when you were doing, reviewing it, so thank you.
Uh, yes, while we're on this slide, which part is Peachtree Corners, that it's being built in?
Um, it's a small segment, um.
It's yellow lines, this right here. So I know. Okay, it's, okay, all of that would be funded by Peachtree Corners?
The right-of-way, act, or the right-of-way acquisition.
We're building the sidewalk on Peachtree Corners, and they're just getting the right-of-way to us?
That's my understanding. Yeah, I understand that. There, they're funding, Michael said they're also funding construction. They are funding construction.
So of the five million now, that's a significant piece of it. Well, that's, well, maybe a third, I mean, maybe a fourth.
Portion, yeah, so the, the value I gave you was total project cost, so not entirely Dunwoody, so I apologize.
Right, no, that's fine, so you're saying that's a, there's, let's say there's about twenty-five percent of the five million that will be funded by Peachtree Corners?
Yes.
That includes this contract for the engineering?
It's. No.
All right.
So the two-point-seven of the build, maybe?
I don't know.
The, the IJ with Peachtree Corners, we're paying for all the design, they pay for any right-of-way in their city, we pay for any in ours, and then the construction is split, I think it's thirty-five percent based on the length that's in Peachtree Corners that they're responsible for.
Well, okay, yes, so in the, again, the total cost of five-point-one million would include right-of-way that is gathered by Peachtree Corners, that is.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
And construction.
And construction, right.
And it's important to note that we got, or we might get, the federal money, because it, in part, it raised our score, because it was multiple cities.
Correct.
That's the kind of project that. That's the kinda project they're looking for, or they were looking for. Whatever, so. It strengthened the application. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So just one quick comment on the, uh, on the traffic light at Sumac. Hopefully GDOT will not give us any problems with that, but whatever we can do to push for that, I meet regularly with the residents of Lockridge Forest, even though it's only a small section that's actually in the city of Dunwoody. Um, and I hear very loudly from many, many of them that they really, really would like a traffic light there. Uh, so anything that we can do to convince GDOT that, uh, to approve that, uh, and are we bound by GDOT's decision there? Could, could the city decide to put a traffic light there anyway? What, what? Or, or because they're managing the project, is that the issue?
We could program a project outside of GDOT to put in a traffic signal.
Okay.
If they do not approve it.
Yeah, cuz obviously with the project going on, it fits nicely into what we're doing there and trying to make it, uh, pedestrian friendly for people leaving that neighborhood, but, uh, from a motor vehicle standpoint too, uh, that they have safety concerns with that intersection. So anything we can do to get a traffic light there would be great. Uh, another thing, just looking at the, the the concept plan here, and I know these are not perhaps exactly to scale and, uh, but it appears, do we need a lot of rot? It doesn't appear that there's a lot of right, most of the project, because we have that extra space on the, on the road where there's some, um, you know, some wide shoulders or extra lane space that we're, we're not really, doesn't appear that we need to acquire a lot of right-of-way. Is that an accurate, this, it only looks like, I actually, from what I can see for this, the only right-of-way is along the, the border of the cemetery property.
There is some minimal right-of-way that will be needed, um, but we will have to identify the exact amount of right-of-way needed during preliminary engineering.
Okay, I was, I was just curious about that. Um, and, um, you know, in Councilman Secondary, you asked a question about the timeline. I've, I've actually, and I actually, I think you had replied to, I've been getting some questions from some residents about the timeline, and I, I think one of them, you actually replied to the resident about and explained it. Um, but, uh, so you, you've already addressed that, so I wanna, uh, re-ask that, but thank you.
Anybody else? John?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. This little sidewalk project is now a five million dollar transportation project. It seems to have a whole lot of stuff going on. The changes at Peeler, the slip lane removal, I don't remember seeing that before. Is this the first time we're seeing that?
This is the first time you've, we've submitted this concept, but this is the project that was in the, um, the Trail Master Plan and, um, what was in the area study for Winters Chapel.
Okay, I'm just, it's the first time I'm seeing it. Um, I'm not saying it's, I'm against it, I'm just saying it's the first time I'm seeing it. The same with Sumac, I'm good with the stoplight there, if it needs to be there. I'm taking for granted that if GDOT says it's not appropriate, but yet we just said that we can do it anyway, I'm guessing that it meets the minimum requirements that the, uh, uh, we, we have standards where we can put a stop sign and where we can't. I'm guessing the standards for a stoplight are much higher and that those have already been measured, the traffic counts and the speed. Has that already been done?
So, uh, the MUTCD dictates, uh, the warrants for traffic signals. We are utilizing the rule factor for the warrants, which we do meet. So that reduces, uh, the volume by thirty percent, uh, but we do meet it, so.
Again, uh, there's a lot of speeding. I personally am good with it as well. I just wanted to make sure that we have met the minimum requirements before we start saying we can do something.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like we can. Um, uh, final question, again, it's a transportation project now, and we're putting in twelve feet of concrete on sidewalks. What are we doing for stormwater?
We are installing storm systems along this corridor.
Okay.
And we will follow the MS four requirements of the city.
Is the stormwater cost and the stormwater design part of this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, alright. And as far as the estimate that we have in front of us for final construction of five million dollars, that includes all the stormwater as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, interesting. Thank you.
And just for the future, I know I'm also a broken record about this. These are, a lot of stormwater goes into most of these projects. It needs to be front and center, in my opinion, of these projects, so people can understand, because that's always a concern. You're coming in and doing this work, what's gonna happen to the water? So when it's presented to us, Eric, it would be really nice to have that delineated as to what the stormwater plan is, or even if it's just, there is a stormwater plan. But, you know, I've said, um, a lot, I don't wanna say a million times, I've said a lot, that I think these plans should be billed as such-and-such path, sidewalk, whatever. Um, and stormwa- stormwater, and if it was me, I'd lead with stormwater, but, you know, cuz those are the, those are big projects. Uh huh.
Follow-up. Um, as far as the funding, the amount of funding that the city's gonna be, be putting forward, that's all in sploß money? Where is that money coming from?
It's sploß.
It's all sploß, one hundred percent, just transportation can be used for transportation really and not a whole lot else?
I believe.
For the most part. Alright, thank you.
Okay. What else? Alright, next. Uh, the, Michael Smith, I think you're up for the same project with the framework for the Georgia Department of Transportation.
I'm gonna present that.
Oh, his name is on here, I'm sorry. Okay.
IT department can get rid of them.
Yeah.
So I just presented the contract amendment for final design for phase two of the Winters Chapel path, and now I'm gonna present the funding contract with GDOT that will allow us to accept the federal funds for the final design of the project. ARC previously programmed one point five million dollars of.
I think this is the wrong presentation. If they, if IT could have no presentation right now, do you have a presentation for the GDOT agreement, Tiffany?
I don't.
Okay, that's fine. It's just that they put up your next presentation. They got, Jay, they got it. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so ARC previously programmed one point five million dollars of federal funding for construction for this project. In twenty twenty-five, the city secured an additional federal grant of six hundred thousand from ARC for preliminary engineering and design. The funding along with the local match will be used to fund the final design. The federal funding is managed by GDOT and requires approval and execution of the attached project framework agreement. Uh, we recommend approval of this project framework agreement with GDOT to receive the federal funds for design of phase two of the Winters Chapel. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead. Tom.
Uh, so I, I have a question that kinda relates to what we were talking to before. If GDOT's receiving the federal funding, um, directly from ARC, like, is, is GDOT obligated under those contracts, or is the city still obligated? Do we know that? To, 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 uh, the, the concerns raised by the mayor? As we move, if, if we wanna move forward on this project? Is, is?
Our, our agreement with GDOT is much like our agreement with the consultant and that everybody says if the money goes away, then we stop and we don't owe you anything beyond that. So if GDOT get, didn't get the money, they would tell us, stop. We're not, we don't have any more money to give you. Uh, and that would, that would be it.
And that includes the design or just, or just the construction portion?
Any.
At any portion, cuz so GDOT, basically, GDOT's in, on the ground floor with the design process move, from this point forward.
Yeah.
So, so, so in essence, we're not receiving the money, it goes to ARC to GDOT?
Right, well, and then GDOT, we actually get our reimbursement from GDOT. But, and what I'm saying is, the our agreement with GDOT, that they have a clause in there that says they, they reserve the right to cancel the project or if there's no money, you know, they're, they're not obligated to give us six hundred thousand dollars if they don't get it from the federal government.
So, and, and that was kinda to the point of my question, so if that federal money does, is, is no longer available, then GDOT would probably pause the project before he would.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you. Alright. Alright, Michael's doing the next one.
Alright, I'm here to talk about the Eitzen Road Cherry Hill Stormwater Project and Connector Path. And this, this project is in our Trail Master Plan to connect, uh, Eitzen Road to Cherry Hill Path in, in the city right-of-way. The about, uh, we got a grant through the state, the, the Georgia received ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds, just as we did, the state got some too, and then they awarded some grants, and we got a, a hundred thousand dollar grant for this project to provide a paved path with bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And we did the design, which I'm showing here on the screen, uh, insisting on the path and the, the left side of the screen shows a kind of a blue shaded ditch, that's the stormwater controls. This, this project really is as much stormwater as it is, uh, a path project. Um, and then we're, after the project's done, they'll have landscaping and we'll plant seventeen trees along the path. We recently advertised a bid for a construction, um, we received five bids, but two of those did not meet the minimum qualification, so there's really only three bids to consider. And they're listed in the memo. Hasbeen Construction was the low bidder at two hundred sixteen thousand four thirty-six. We, uh, some of our people have worked with Hasbeen before and they're a, a, um, uh, we have good experience with them. The funding, uh, the remaining funding we have from the grant is about eighty thousand dollars because of all the stormwater improvements, which you can see really are over half the cost of the project. We're proposing to take those improvements out of the stormwater fund, which is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, and then that leaves about close to thirty-nine thousand that we will, um, need to pull out of the Georgetown Trails Sploß Project, which has six hundred thousand budgeted this year, which we are not going to need based on recent conversations with GDOT, that they will include that project in their project. So, that gives us the total funding, including contingency and all the, um, soft costs for construction, and so we're recommending approval of a contract with Hasbeen Construction with a ten percent contingency.
Uh, questions, comments? Rob?
So, looking at the, the three bids that were good, um, one is almost twice as much as the other two. Did the other two miss something, or did the third one really misunderstand the, the project?
Uh, you know, it's hard to say. It could be that the third one put a number out there, we're, we're busy, and if we got it for this number, we'd do it, but um, I, I think the other two numbers are good. Before we put it out to bid, we had talked to some contractors and gotten quotes in that two hundred thousand dollar range, so we feel comfortable with the number submitted.
Anybody else? Uh, John?
Michael, as far as the path that goes to this trail connection, tell me what comes down Eitzen, or what comes down Cherry Hill? What's the path connection?
As far as somebody riding a bicycle.
Right, are we doing a twelve-foot sidewalk down, uh, down Cherry Hill?
No, thi- this will, uh, connect into the street and then, because they're neighborhood streets, at that point, the bikes will just be in the roadway.
So everything's in the roadway, both north and south of this trail connection. So both on Eitzen and Cherry Hill, there's really nothing.
Correct.
So, we have a twelve-foot trail connection relatively short. The community, um, that abuts this, uh, project that came to us with this idea um, at our last meeting, asked that this not be a twelve-foot trail. They asked that this be a ten-foot trail and eight-foot trail. They don't understand why a small little connection needs to be twelve feet wide when there's not gonna be twelve feet above it or twelve feet below it. You're just going from street to street. Why are we doing it to this level at this expense? Can we cut it down to eight feet and save the sploß money for something else?
Well, the, the twelve feet is just based on the, the city, the standard that the city has adopted. Uh, I mean, if you work, if you go to eight feet, it's below the minimum needed for, um, bicycle and pedex, pedestrian two-way traffic. Um, so that minimum for a shared-use path is ten feet.
Cuz again, the community just wanted a little connection, and I'm sure we, they're all gonna appreciate the stormwater, don't get me wrong. Um, I think they just wanted to scale this back. They didn't understand the twelve, they would appreciate the ten, they'd really appreciate the eight. All they were looking for is the amount of two-way traffic that's gonna be going down that path at the same time, under current scenario is very, very, very small. So it's not like it's the Brook Run Trail, we're gonna get people passing each other on a regular basis. They don't understand the need for ten feet even. So again, I would like to s- see this scaled back, but that's, I'm just one person.
Yeah, I kind of think that there's an opportunity here to do something a little different and see if it works. And so, uh, whether it's ten feet or eight feet, I just, I feel like we're fa- facing what I think are gonna be extreme funding challenges moving forward, at least with the, what might happen. But also, we, we have to figure out a way, I believe, again, I'm one vote on this council, to find a way to be flexible with some of this stuff. We are a built-out city. And this is an opportunity, I agree with John, I don't think there'll be much traffic, and I think it's an opportunity to show our willingness to listen and to, to provide some flexibility in a spot where, you know, I don't know how much money it'll save us, but to sh- but also just to show that we have the ability to be flexible. So that's just my take. Uh, Rob?
I, I think I'm gonna echo what you said, just because I, I can think of, I mean, there are a number of spots around the city where we've talked about kind of what these little neighborhood connections before, and I, I'm certainly willing to entertain a, uh, a smaller design standard for what will probably be a not very frequently used segment. I would rather see the segments put in, in any way, than to have to just always go to a twelve-foot segment. And if, you know, a slightly narrower, uh, path is more palatable, then we can get these in, I'd rather go with that approach.
I will say to that, that I think these are projects in the cost that we can probably fund ourselves through sploß and stormwater, and we ought to come up, but I'm afraid that some neighborhoods who might embrace it, the connection will not embrace twelve feet, and so they won't ask. And so by showing we can be flexible, I think that that might encourage, and these are the, if the federal funding pipeline shuts down, which I know is a horrible thing to think about from a capital improvement standard, these are the kinda projects that we're gonna be able to do because we'll be able to manage them in our budget. And so, you know, if we can, I don't know how much trouble it is to come back with a slightly narrower trail to show that we're flexible, Eric and, um, Michael, just to see. But this one is complicated, right? Because it goes over a sewer line or something, or is that not this one?
No, I mean, if the council wants to reduce it, say to ten feet, we can just, we can do that during construction. We get, we get, I mean, you kinda have to build this out the way it is anyway, and you just say, we're gonna make it two feet narrower, uh, when they actually put down the concrete.
Okay. And then that's a, at the end of the picture thing, that's a, something to keep cars off, right? Is, is there a?
Yes, there's a little landscaped island on one end, and then there'll be bollards and signs also.
And then the trees are gonna be how mature? Do we know yet, or is that too early?
I, I don't remember what caliper they are, but they'll be typical of what we planted in other places. So they're, you know, they're not gonna be mature, but they'll be you know, ten to fifteen.
Right. So one of the issues on the existing sidewalk by the water, what's it called, Joe? What's the name of the water plant? No, treatments, Scott Kandler. On that sidewalk on Peeler is that there are too many trees, and we ought to trim them. And so are we setting ourselves up for a similar feedback loop with this many trees?
I don't, I don't think so. I think these are, uh, these are more like twenty to twenty-five feet.
Okay, it's just on the picture, it looks like they're on top of each other. Alright. Thank you. Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, um, here goes. This would be the first, I believe, in my understanding, the first time we've connected something like this in the city since incorporation. Correct me if I'm wrong.
We have some other paths, but they're not paved.
Alright, so this is the first one, when we talk about neighborhood connectivity, we have no precedence here, so we have not. We've listened to people and they say, I don't want it because it's next to my house. I, I force, I, I, I wanted us to have a master plan for trails so that we could have a holistic view for all of the fifty-two thousand people that live here across thirteen square miles. And this is part of that plan. And part of that plan, if the fellow folks on council would like to review it. Could we potentially, when you bring this up for next time? Let's talk about the on-street connectivity, what is in that plan with markings of sharos and directional wayfinding signs through neighborhood and calm streets. I know there was a lot of contention with the neighborhoods not knowing what that really meant. I was at one of the first open houses when Path Foundation came here. And I, I should have called out a woman because she said, those people on Marde are gonna drive to my neighborhood and park here to take the trail. That's when we're talking about neighborhood street calming, and that implicit underlying racism. And, and I don't, I should have called her out, and I didn't. So my, my bad for that. So what this is, is a connectivity using neighborhood streets, and it's gonna prevent a potential death of people that right now there's no connectivity. And the existing roadway users that are going out there on Tilly Mill or Peeler to try to get to connection to Brook Run to connect to our trails and to connect to our, our parks. So when I was running for city council in twenty nineteen, look at my, my campaign kickoff, and I said, literally in the first two minutes, I want to create a city that every child should be able to safely walk or ride their bikes to school. And we can create a community like that by building out the trail network in Brook Run. That's what I said in twenty nineteen, and that's what I still say today. So this is a small little, little bucket, right, and whether it's twelve feet or whether it's ten feet. It is what it is, and it's not gonna save any money at all, because the, the capital funders expenditure there, so, um, we talk about listening to the neighborhoods, let's listen to the entire residents of the fifty-two thousand people here and the hundred and fifty thousand people that come to, come to visit in the city. We are building a trail along Peeler, it will be built, we're building this one on Winter Chapel, we have a park there. People ride on, on roads, and I ride through Poppy Hollow, I get over to Peeler and I walk through the bushes on my bicycle, because I don't want to ride my bike. As the experienced sixty-two-year-old cyclist said, I mean, because I've been hit by a car, I do not want to ride my bike on that segment of Tilly Mill slash Peeler going toward Brook Run, and I ride across through Edson, I ride over to North Peach, North, uh, Dunwoody North. And I get to Brook Run safely, so, um, Eric, I sent an email over the weekend in conjunction with this item. I'd like to have signage and street marking added to direct persons on bicycles, so they know how to get to this place. So they know that it is, uh, through the Dunwoody North neighborhood, how to get to Brook Run Park. How to get to One Word Hollow, it'll be great to see that, just simple, little MUTCD compliant, locally fabricated Dunwoody Trail directional arrow sign, so. This is, um, more than just the neighbors walking to the adjacent neighborhood, these are people that are, that are gonna be on bikes, and I know when you build it, they will come. Um, you know, back in the day when, when people, I saw people riding, they'd come to me, oh, Joe, do you know that person on the bike? I was like, no. And I, today, we're seeing people here, I don't know them. But I advocated for it for ten, fifteen years ago. So anyway, I see this as, let's build it, we will have, have it happen, and to me, it's the most transformational thing we can do for quality of life, so. Thank you, and I hope we get, get this done.
All right, this will just be an action item when you're ready to bring it.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Richard McLeod, I believe you're right, Michael, that was it for you all, right? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council, this is an update of the additional services from TSW. If you remember when we approved the contract back in May of two thousand twenty-four, they had the additional services listed, but, uh, you all kind of wanted to go, but staff recommended that we do not go, because the budget was set. Uh, but the budget has, uh, two thousand twenty-five does include the, the coverage for all these items. Um, so right now, when I bring this back, um, the four items on there. Only two of them need approval now, because the other two can wait until August until they come up about, so.
So I want to clarify something that I heard in public comment. Which, just to clarify. A, a speaker said that we've all blessed the comprehensive plan, we have not blessed the comprehensive plan, most of us saw the ma- first time we've had a major presentation was at the meeting the other night. And so we haven't had an opportunity, given the structure of that meeting, we just asked questions, gave some feedback, but I just want to clarify that we haven't approved anything. And it'll come to us at some point in the summer, correct?
Yes, it hasn't even been back to the steering committee.
Right, okay, so I just, I just wanted to clarify that for the audience. Um, okay, questions or comments on these? Everybody okay with it? I want to just make sure that for Georgetown, we have lots of opportunities for public input. And that we, we come up with some strategies, uh, there's a lot of residents in the Georgetown area who are in rentals of one kind or another, and then also in like condos. And I, I want to make sure that we find a way to be inclusive in our planning process. Um, so make sure that's in the budget, if not, come back and let us know before we vote on it. Go ahead, Tom.
I just have a one question, a clarification, would the Georgetown Small Area Plan, is that the area that we can currently consider the traditional Georgetown, because in the, in the plan, they enter, mentioned the Georgetown East?
No, that's why I included the original, uh, contract, because you'll see the numbers went up for Georgetown, because they're thinking Georgetown's much larger now than it was, so that's why the adjustment went up. But the overall costs went down, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Quick point of clarification, Richard, as part of the comprehensive, uh, plan, is there any concurrent simultaneous updating of underlying zoning?
No.
Thank you.
It just tells a developer what we would be interested in, and they would have to go through a rezoning.
Correct.
If, if, right, okay, that's what I thought.
The past plan did list all those zoning categories, but we do not want to list it now, because we're going into the code rewrite, so the code rewrite could amend those zoning cat- categories.
Anybody else? All right, can these two items be on consent? Is everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. All right. That's it. Public co- public comments, Zach Humphreys? You'll have three minutes.
I guess I was gonna finish, I'll, I'll finish that story up real quick, um, basically Sally Hughes, she, uh, made a very successful, uh, ferry, um, across the Toa River. Um, but unfortunately, um, there were, uh, two white men who rented the road, uh, up above, and they rerouted that road. And basic, it, it bankrupted her, and she was kicked out, um, of that Cherokee land, um, because of the Trail of Tears. Um, I, I, I think I was, I was, I was gonna finish that up more, but I, I really want to talk about, you know, what I I plan to do here, what I want to do here, and, and, and it's really a lot of just like an analysis of power, who has power in the city of Dunwoody? You know, who historically has had power? You look at the foundations of Dunwoody, it was originally the Mesquici, and then and then they were kicked out, and it was, uh, colonized through a lottery system. And, you know, and then it was slave owners, it was, uh, and, and, and those who fought for the pres- the preservation of that slavery, uh, it was then the, uh, it was then the sharecroppers and the members of, of the KKK and the homeowners association, all of which continue to support the white supremacist ideals that exist today. And we need, like, I worry about who gets to make these decisions and who gets to wield this power? So when we look at something like drones, like, who, like, who is determining the legality of these actions that, you know, do we really want to arrest more of our citizens? Like, if I were to go out and to protest with a group of people, would these drones be used in that process? And when it comes to our citizens, like, it, it, we talk about these legacy like, uh, neighborhoods versus, you know, of, of the higher density areas, this is a city. This is, this is a community, this is a group of people. Like, we have problems, we have horrible budgetary problems right now, and they're saying that, oh, we, we already have enough apartments. Well, unfortunately, those apartments subsidize the homeowners because of our regressive tax policy, with the property tax, with the frozen value tax that is ingrained into our very constitution. And i- i- it is of the, you know, it is of the, i- i- the white supremacist ideals are baked into the very nature of what Dunwoody is today, so yeah, sure, the homeowners aren't really as in control of anymore, but it is because they are the power. They are the reality, they are the norm, and it, it, it.
Thank you.
It, we have to look at these systems and fix them.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Uh, city manager comments?
Mayor, we will need an executive session for litigation and personnel.
Okay, um, council comments? Uh, food truck Thursdays, I think starts this Thursday. And it's monthly now. Lemonade Days is the following week. And that, um, is all I have. Go ahead.
To adjourn to executive session for purposes of litigation and personnel?
Okay. All in favor? Okay. I don't have a big pen, I'm gonna have this on this.
In mind, some kind of memorial, something permanent in a park.
Okay.
Thank you.
Testing.
Hello, Wiki Wiki.
Yeah, Pro Tim? Move to adjourn. Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by Catherine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, thank you.